Think about the word apocalypse or apocalyptic.
I'm thinking of that picture there.
Think of that picture there?
Yeah.
Which is a picture of what?
I don't know. Destruction. Destroying the world.
Destruction?
Yeah.
Yeah? The end of times? Does the end of times excite you or scare you?
A little bit both.
Yeah.
Not how much you expect.
Okay. Well, tonight, we're going to be looking at Mark, Chapter 13. Mark, Chapter 13, is known by a lot of biblical scholars as the Little Apocalypse, because it's a whole chapter that deals with the question of the apocalyptic picture or the end of times. The word apocalypse, even though we tend to associate it with all that destruction, right? Do you remember the movie Apocalypse Now and all that stuff? The word apocalypse really just means revealing. It is to reveal that which is not seen. So apocalyptic literature is basically a picture that helps, that gives us images or thoughts about a future that we cannot see. So it's not necessarily a picture of destruction, even though that's involved in it. And the word eschaton or eschatology, where we talk about the end of times, looks at, is basically a word that means the goal. End times are the, is where things are headed. And so when we think about eschatology, if we just think about it simply in terms of destruction, we stop short of really where it's all headed. So tonight, when we look at Mark, Chapter 13, Dr. Labine tells us that we're looking at Mark's picture of the end of the world as we know it. That last phrase is important. The end of the world as we know it. The world, the world that we live in, will, in a sense, be coming to an end, and a different future will come into being. Historically, for the persecuted, the people who are oppressed, the people who are on the skids in society, apocalyptic visions are often associated with comfort and justice, because in the apocalypse or in the end times, God's justice will prevail, and those who have been oppressors or unjust people will be punished. Mark, Chapter 13, is an interesting chapter, because it both refers to things that have already happened, but it uses those things that have already happened to give us a glimpse or show us what is going to happen. And so we call that prophecy from the event. And will, the event that prompts Jesus' discussion here in Mark, Chapter 13, or Mark's writing about it, is the destruction of the temple in AD 7, which was about thirty or so years after Jesus was crucified. Mark, Chapter 13, modulates, goes back and forth between ominous stuff and optimistic pictures, between warning and between assurance. The major theme of Mark, Chapter 13, as you will see as we read through it, is basically stay awake, keep awake, keep alert. And there are two different audiences that we see in Mark, Chapter 13. One is the disciples and the others that are, that we see in the story itself. Jesus is speaking to those in his time, at the time of the story. And of course, the Gospels weren't just written for the disciples in the first century. The Gospels were written for us. And so we're part of the audience too, which means when Jesus is talking about the destruction of the temple, we kind of have to ask ourselves, well, so what does that mean for us? How does that apply to us? So how do we make sense out of the destruction of the temple in AD 7? So we're going to take a moment and listen to Dr. Labine kind of reflect upon Mark, Chapter 13, and then we're just going to take a look into some of the stuff that we find in this Little Apocalypse.
Mark, Chapter 13, is called the Little Apocalypse, and Little here is in contrast to Big. The Big Apocalypse is the last book in the New Testament, can in the Book of Revelation, sometimes called the Apocalypse of John. We get the term apocalypse or apocalyptic from the Greek word, apokalypto, which means to uncover or to reveal, hence revelation to John, or indeed revelation from John. Apocalyptic literature, which was known in antiquity, Jews had it, Greeks had it, Romans had it. Apocalyptic literature was designed to tell us what we could not see without special revelation, the end of time and what that looked like, the heavens. And in antiquity, there was more than one. Paul talks about being brought up to the third heaven, or seven heavens, or even on cloud nine. Apocalyptic will also tell us about what's in hell and those different rungs in hell. So apocalyptic literature is designed to take us out of our quotidian mundane environment and give us a glimpse of the world up there or the world out there in the future. And that's what Mark, Chapter 13, does. It begins with the disciples in Jesus sitting on the Mount of Olives overlooking the gorgeous temple complex, huge buildings, and the disciples from the gallows where they did not have huge buildings are marveling, magnificent. Look at these stones! And Jesus says, "Not one stone here will be left upon another." And now we're moving not just to war and not just to destruction, and not just to the year seventy, but to the end of time, when the world as we know it will be no more, the kingdom of God will break in, those who stay the course will be rewarded, and those who fail will face punishment. Apocalyptic can be comforting to those people who are being oppressed, who need to know that at some point they will be rewarded for their steadfastness. But apocalyptic should be frightening to all those people who act with malice rather than compassion. I don't want to cover stuff that I've already covered, and I do need to say something about the Little Apocalypse, Mark, Chapter routine, but I hadn't planned on giving it an entire chapter. But as I talked to my friends, and God bless my friends, because they let me talk about these sunny guys with them, they kept saying, "You need to do more about apocalyptic." Why? Because we continually see signs on the highway saying, "Jesus is coming back next week, in October next year." And we're continually seeing information on the internet. The signs are here, the apocalypse is coming, the end of the world is coming, Jesus will return and do a mop-up operation, or we don't need to pay attention to ecology anymore, remember that picture, the world's going to end in our lifetime, so why would we worry about clean water or clean air? Do something unapocalyptic. And then I started working on Mark 13, and working on it, and working on it, trying to crack the code. And Mark will not let me do this. In the Gospel of Mark, Jesus makes it very clear that no one knows the day or the hour. We're not going to know when that end of the world comes, not even Jesus knows. So all those people who say, "Well, he didn't say something about the minute," that's just playing fast news with the test. Mark does not tell us when the end is coming. Mark rather assures us that it will come next month, next year, a hundred years from now, two thousand years from now. But Mark makes us think, if God's justice is about to break into the world, if the end is coming, how do I prepare for that? How do I live a life of righteousness? How do I live out this good news if I know that the world that we have here and now is not the only story? How do I act if I know that death, death from natural causes, death from accident, death on a cross? How do I act if I know that death is not the last word? Mark's Apocalypse challenges us to ask those questions without giving us any easy answers. Why? Because there are no easy answers to do. Historians, and I consider myself to be an historian, we're actually pretty good at figuring out what Jesus said and did, or what Mark might have had in mind, or who the original readers of Mark might have been, and what they would have taken away from this Gospel. But when the Gospel predicts the future, historians are stuck. What we can do, and this is often, is to say, what text does Mark allude to? What are the sources on which Mark is drawing? Because Mark is not only recording material that Jesus said, or what people remembered him to have said, Mark also knows the scriptures of Israel. And in the Book of Daniel, which is the Old Testament, to use the Christian term, the Old Testament's major apocalyptic literature, the end of the Book of Daniel, we have this image of one like a son of humanity. So somebody who is like a human being, say, an angel, for example, not a human being, but looks like one, or as they say, plays one on TV. "One like a son of humanity will come on the clouds of heaven to gather the elect from the ends of the earth," as Mark suggests. I think this is helpful. When we start thinking about the second coming of Jesus, and people have been thinking about the second coming for two thousand years now, what do we expect? Do we expect massive takedown, destruction, as we have in the Book of Revelation? And Mark says, "Think again." We're not talking about destruction. Yes, the destruction of the temple, but Mark says that second coming, that's not a destruction, that's a gathering, that's a uniting of heaven and earth. It's a bringing together of all the people who live in steadfast. The Gospel of John suggests that Jesus did not come into the world to condemn it, but to show divine love. So one way of approaching some of this destruction in Mark, Chapter 13, is to think about that image of gathering, of collecting, of uniting heaven and earth, of bringing about that good news of the kingdom of God. And then apocalyptic, as distressing and as channeling and as confusing as it is, can actually be a type of literature that provides comfort and encouragement. When Mark identifies Jesus, or when Jesus himself uses the title, "Son of Humanity," sometimes "Son of Man," but I prefer that non-sexist slang, "Son of Humanity," Mark is drawing on the Book of Daniel, Mark is also drawing on Ezekiel, Mark is drawing on the Psalms, because one like a son of humanity can be an angel, and a son of humanity is just a human being. But Mark is drawing on other passages as well. The Book of Daniel mentions something that's translated variously as "the abomination of desolation," or "the desolating sacrilege," whatever it was, it was bad. For Daniel, it's probably the occasion when King Antiochus the Fourth Epiphanes, the Syrian-Greek king in the 160s BCE, by the way, the word Epiphanes means "God-made manifest," so any king who titles himself Epiphanes, high on God-made manifest, really high legal strength. And what Antiochus the Fourth Epiphanes did in cahoots with the high priests at the time, was say, "Let's get rid of some of this uniquely Jewish practice, like circumcision and Sabbath observance and dietary regulations." And they wound up sacrificing a pig, completely unpoached, on the altar of the Jerusalem temple, an abomination of desolation, the worst thing that you can imagine. And Mark evokes this language. When you see the desolating sacrilege, when you see the abomination of desolation, let the reader understand, then lean to the hills, because bad things are going to happen. To what was Mark referring? Well, it might have been the surrounding of Jerusalem by the Roman troops, because what Rome did in 66 to 70 is surround the city and starve the people into submission, and then burn down the temple. Or maybe it was a calliculus attempt to put his statue in the Jerusalem temple, which would have been idolatry. This leads to what we know as the world's first sit-down strike, when the people protested and said, "Do not allow this to happen." But I think Mark leaves the symbolism open. What is so awful, so horrible, that you think you cannot live anymore by seeing this degradating abomination happen? And then you feel called to do something. It can't get any worse. I think of this when I watch the news in the evening. What new horrible thing will happen, and when will we finally say, "This is enough? This is time when you can no longer sit still? This is something that God would find horrible?" And therefore, we have to find it horrible too. Desolating sacrifices, abominations of desolation, they're still with us. And what do we do? And what message do we take? Remain steadfast? Protest? Complain? Rail? All of those things.
So before we move on, let me just ask you. What, whenever she said, what she said struck you? Is there anything that she said that stood out to you, or that you want to explore a bit more, or have a question about? Or you've never thought about before? All right, maybe you'll have some questions as we go along. So I want to just walk through Chapter 13. And we'll try to do that maybe a little faster than I did last week, and say, "Oh, no, I heard it right around last week." If somebody wouldn't mind reading for us Mark, Chapter 13, verses 1 and 2, if you can see that well enough. I know you can't read on the sheet I gave you, if you can read it well enough off the screen.
As he came out of the temple, one of his disciples said to him, "Look, teacher, what large stones and what large building." Then Jesus asked him, "Do you see those great buildings? Not one stone will be left here upon another. All will be thrown down."
So you see in the picture there is a model. That's a model of the temple that Herod was building in Jerusalem. It's known as the Second Temple. The First Temple was built by Solomon and was destroyed by the Babylonians in 586 B.C. And then Herod begins to build this temple. The stones that make up the wall and make up part of that tower there where the Holy of Holies is were eighty-ton square limestone boulders. So when, when the disciple says, "Wow, look at these stones," those were impressive. And so the temple that was built in Jerusalem, that Herod built in Jerusalem, one commentator calls it "an impregnable monument," an impregnable monument to Herod's greatness. He wanted to make this a showcase, a tourist attraction for the whole world. But beyond Herod, it became a testimony to the majesty and might of Israel's God. So the temple was meant to be impressive. It was meant to be something that you walked up to and went, "Wow, this is really something." Eighty-ton stones, can you imagine that? I don't know how they moved them, and carved them, and set them one on top of the other. But Jesus says, "Not one of those stones will be left on top of the other." For Mark and for Jesus, stones and blocks of stone cannot encase God. And while the temple may be a symbol of God's presence, you can't confine God to the temple. You may also remember that not too long ago, when we were reading, Jesus quoted from the Psalms, "The stone that the builders rejected has become the chief cornerstone." So even here, there's an implicit contrast between these eighty-ton stones on which the temple was built and Jesus, who becomes the place where God is seen and God is known. So the disciples are pretty impressed. Amy points out that they grew up in Galilee, they didn't see all this stuff. So they come here, man, it feels like seeing the Empire State Building for the first time. Wow, this is pretty, this is pretty impressive. So we move on. If somebody wouldn't mind reading verses 3 through 8 there from Mark, Chapter 13, if you can see that well.
When he was sitting on the Mount of Olives, opposite the temple, Peter, James, John, and Andrew asked him privately, "Tell us, when will all this be, and what will be the sign that all these things are about to be accomplished?" Jesus began to say to them, "Beware, that no one leads you astray. When you hear of wars and rumors of war, do not be alarmed. This must take place, but the end is still to come. For nation will rise against nation, and kingdom against kingdom. There will be earthquakes in various places; there will be famines. This is but the beginning of the birth pains."
So Jesus has announced that there's going to be a time when none of the stones of the temple will be standing one upon the other. Now here is where you get this, this kind of dual reading in Mark, because Mark was actually written after the Romans had destroyed the temple. So Mark is writing at a time when the temple has been destroyed, and most of it has been burned and knocked down. Now we know that part of the temple was not totally knocked down. The Wailing Wall is old in Jerusalem, is part of that old wall that was there. So Mark's, this story of the destruction of the temple is something that evidently Jesus was aware enough of what was happening around him, the foment and everything, that he realized that something bad was getting ready to happen. But of course, Mark writes after the destruction of the temple. So Jesus kind of pulls back from the announcement, because his disciples come to Jesus, and they want to know, "When's this going to happen?" Now, here's one of those times where you have to dig in to Mark a little bit. If you just think of the audience being the disciples during this time before Jesus is crucified, that, that's a logical question, right? Well, when's that going to happen, Jesus? When, when is the temple going to be destroyed? But if you're like us, you're reading it after the temple was destroyed, we already know the answer to that question, right? It was destroyed in AD 7. But Jesus moves this question of timing to a whole different level. He pulls back from the final collapse to the immediate crisis of what happens before the end comes. And, and what you see, and what Jesus is saying to his disciples here, is that it's not so much a matter of when these things will take place, but how do we live in the meantime? Question is not so much trying to figure out when the end is coming, but how do we live in the time between Jesus' first advent and his second advent? And you'll notice that Jesus tells his disciples that no historical event can be read as a sign of the eschaton. But you can't, you can't go looking at historical events, you can't go looking at the signs of the time and going, "Aha, this is happening, this is happening, therefore, the end is getting ready to happen." No historical event is a sign of the eschaton or the end times. You can't read them that way. Nor can you read any natural event. So earthquakes and floods and all that kind of stuff are not in and of themselves signs of the end times. So historical events and natural events cannot be read. In this passage, Jesus says, "There's going to be people that are going to try to lead you astray, and they're going to try to get you to focus on the wars and rumors of wars." And that, those are going to take place. It's kind of the way the world operates, the way we operate. But, but don't be alarmed, the, the end is still coming. The world is not going to end necessarily in the destruction of the world by human beings. There're going to be earthquakes and famines, but those are just the beginning of the birth pains. Now, now you'll notice that, that, that last phrase there, the beginnings of the birth pains. Birth is a painful process. But on the other side of that pain, there's the joy of new life, there's the joy of children. And so pain transforms into joy. But we, we almost, it's almost as if Mark is telling us, Jesus is telling us, that we have to walk through pain. Now you notice he says, "There's going to be a lot of things, there's going to be wars and rumors of wars, there's going to be famine, there's going to be earthquakes, nations are going to rise against nation, terrible things are going to happen, you can't get away from that. We have to be willing to walk through that. We have to be willing to live through that and live into it to some extent, if we experience the joy that comes from the other side." You'll notice that he also warns against false Messiah's, comes back to that theme, people who will try to lead you astray. So here, he moves the question from a question of timing to saying, "What you really need to be concerned about is what you're going to do, how you're going to live in the meantime." Now, if somebody wouldn't mind reading for us verses 9 through 13.
As for yourself, beware, for they will hand you over to councils, and you will be beaten in synagogues, and you will stand before governors and kings because of me, as a testimony to them. And the good news must first be proclaimed to all peoples. When they bring you to trial and hand you over, do not worry beforehand about what you are to say, but say whatever is given you at the time, for it is not you who speak, but the Holy Spirit. Siblings will betray sibling to death, and to father his child, and children will rise against parents and have them put to death, and you will be hated for all because of my name. But the one who endures to the end will be saved.
How does that make you feel? How do you react to that? What is Jesus saying?
That we're all going to be tried, basically, not by Him, but by people around us. We want to know where we stand with our faith, and ridicule us and persecute us because of it.
Jesus almost takes persecution as a given. It's just going to happen. And He doesn't sugarcoat it, does He? I mean, look at that. They're going to be drugged before governors and councils, fathers are going to turn against their children, children are going to turn against their parents, children, siblings are going to turn against each other. But how are we to handle that? Are we to fight back?
I don't get that impression.
What are we to do?
We're to let God speak through us to them.
And endure to the end.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not called upon to defend ourselves, but to defend the Gospel. We're called upon not to, not to, not to protest and yield treatment we have, but we use that as an opportunity to proclaim the Gospel. Well, a lot of us probably have a hard time thinking of persecution and difficulty as an opportunity. And yet Jesus seems to think, "This is an opportunity for you to bear witness, for you to testify to the truth of the Gospel." The proclamation of the Gospel is not something that's proclaimed by the powerful. The Gospel is not proclaimed by the state, but by the persecutor. The gospel is not proclaimed by the state, but by the persecution. Amy, in her book, Amy Levine, her book says, "The proclamation of Jesus as Lord is a political proclamation, but it challenges all the powers of the world. Caesar is not Lord, Jesus is. Antioch Epiphanes isn't God, Jesus is." But proclamation of Jesus as Lord also is familial. That is, if we refuse to honor the gods of our family, we are therefore refusing to honor the faith of our family, which in many respects is tantamount to rejecting the family altogether. Because in many places in the world, the worship of gods and religion is so much tied up in the whole of life, we kind of tend to segment things, draw them ideal. This is our spiritual side, this is our whatever side. But in many parts of the world, that division doesn't happen. And so to reject the gods of your mothers and fathers and your grandmothers and grandfathers is to reject them. And so this turning against is something that, in a sense, begins when people proclaim that Jesus Christ is Lord and turn away from all the different gods of the world. So that this proclamation of Jesus as Lord and committing ourselves to the Lord is not a safe thing to do in this world. Now, you know, every time I read this, I stop and think to myself, a lot of Christians in America just get all tied up in knots when people oppose them. And I'm kind of thinking, "Well, that's, Jesus told us that was what was gonna happen." Why do we expect to be mollycoddled by the power structures of this world? When we're proclaiming a world and a kingdom that runs in total opposition to the way the world runs in our midst? So in the meantime, not only are we going to have to live through the pain of wars and rumors of wars and famine and the like, natural disasters, but we need to realize that because of who we are, we are oftentimes gonna be ostracized and looked at not as people who live in the mainstream, but people who live on the outside. Not an easy thing for us to come to grips with, is it? Let me move on, those are kind of our... Somebody wouldn't mind reading verses fourteen to twenty.
But when you see the desolating sacrilege set up where it ought not to be, let the reader understand, "And those in Judea must flee to the mountains. The one on the housestop must not go down or enter to take anything from the house; the one in the field must not turn back to get a coat. Woe to those who are pregnant and to those who are nursing infants in these days; pray that it may not be in winter, for in those days there will be suffering. 'Tis has not been from the beginning, or the creation that God created until now and never will be. And if the Lord did not cut short those days, no one would be saved. But for the sake of the elect whom He chose, He has cut short those days."
Okay. So we encounter in verse fourteen, this notion of the desolating sacrilege. Could somebody flip these lights off right here? I think it might help see those pictures better. And, yeah, I think down there. Here, Amy, in her talk, mentioned two possibilities in Mark's understanding of what this desolating sacrilege might be. Of course, one was the sacrificing of the pig on the altar. But the other might be the attempt, or not just the attempt, the actual setting up of a temple to Zeus, a statue of Zeus in the temple by Antioch Epiphanes. And this picture here is a picture of Zeus on his throne, the chief god on the Greek pantheon. So you can imagine what that would have struck the Jews as, is seeing Zeus sitting on a throne in the temple that's designed to God. It would definitely be seen as something that was desolated. Now, the other picture is a picture of a statue of Gaius Caligula. Gaius Caligula was a Roman emperor who attempted to put his statue in the temples of every religion in the world, so that people would have to worship him. He never succeeded in getting his statue in the temple in Jerusalem, but most historians argue that it was his attempt to put his statue inside the temple in Jerusalem that provoked the war between the Romans and the Jews in eighty-sixty-five, eighty-sixty-four, that ended in eighty-seventy, with the destruction of Jerusalem and the destruction of the temple. So for Mark readers, in his day, they might have thought of Antioch Epiphanes kind of setting up, or actually setting up the throne of Zeus in the temple. Or they may have remembered that Gaius Caligula attempted to set up a statue to himself in the temple. But Amy asked a question for us in her, when we saw the video. Do we recognize abominations when we see them? Something that would be so offensive to God as the statue of Zeus would be or the statue of Gaius Caligula might have been? Or is there anything that can offend us that badly? Are there things that get brought into the worship of God, that get brought into the people of God that really could be seen as that offensive? Something to ponder, because that's Mark's message in a sense to us. But notice, what does Mark say or what does Jesus say, that when we see this sacrilege, what are we supposed to do?
Run for the hills.
Get the heck out of Dodge, right? And you'll notice that we gotta be ready to move quickly? That attachment to possessions, as well as to relationships, must be put aside? And we must respond to God and trust in prayer? These kind of things are the stuff that just turn the world upside down. Somebody read verses twenty-one to twenty-two there.
And if anyone says to you at that time, "Look, here is the Messiah," or, "Look, there he is," do not believe it. False messias and false prophets will appear, produce signs and wonder to lead astray. I'm sorry, a possible be elect, to be alert. I have already told you everything, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. The high could be a possible, lead astray if possible, be alert. But be alert, I have already told you everything. Now, you'll notice the picture on the screen is basically the cover of a book, which is also the cover of a documentary that was done. Do you recognize some of these people up here? Recognize Hitler?
Napoleon.
Mao and Alexander.
Napoleon and Mussolini.
Marx and Stalin.
Yeah. So you'll notice that most of these false messias, these people who come and say, "I can solve the problems of the world. I can fix it. I can fix the world. I can fix your lives." Or what? They're all kind of political figures, aren't they? It's not hard for political figures to put themselves in the place of God. In fact, a lot of times when you read the powers and principalities in scriptures, you're talking about those people who set themselves up, like Caesar did, as gods who can fix all the problems of the world. Of course, hadn't one of those people promised that if they could just have the power, if they could just have the position, they could bring about utopia? Stalin and Engels, Marx, promised that if we could get rid of the upper class and everybody live equally in the working class, that utopia would take place. Alexander believed the same thing, Mussolini and his fascist stuff, as well as Hitler, the perfect race. So this idea of people who are false prophets and messias are not necessarily religious figures. In fact, they may not be religious figures at all. Most of the time when we have religious figures who run around claiming to be the Messiah, we pretty quickly dismiss them as just crazy people. Even though some people follow them like a cult, but most people kind of go, "Oh, yeah, those people are just living off the rocker." But when it comes to politics, we're oftentimes ready to give politicians the position that only belongs to Jesus. And I think that, quite honestly, there are an awful lot of God's people who are being led astray in our day and time. Somebody read verses twenty-four to twenty-six.
But in those days, after that suffering, the sun will be darkened, and the moon will not give its light; the stars will be falling from heaven, and the powers in the heavens will be shaken. Then they will see the Son of Man coming in clouds with great power and glory. Then He will send out the angels and gather the elect, the forebends, from the winds, from ends of earth to the ends of heaven.
Now, part of this is kind of scary, isn't it? You know, moon, the sun being darkened, the moon not giving its light, stars falling from heaven, and the powers in heaven being shaken. That sounds kind of unnerving, doesn't it? But most commentators argue that there cannot be recreation without some uncreation. In order to recreate the world, we kind of have to undo some things. But you'll notice that the end of it all is, if you read the last verse there, that the end of this undoing and this recreating is the end gathering. Then He will send out His angels and gather the elect from the four winds. It's the gathering of people from all over the earth. So that Mark and Jesus are not talking about the annihilation of the world, but a new The word shaking there, heaven, powers of heaven will be shaken, is not a word in Greek that means demolishing, but reordering. It's almost as if Mark and Jesus is saying, "And the powers of heaven, and the powers to heaven will be reordered or reoriented." So what is the sign of the end times? How do we know the end has come?
When Christ descends from heaven.
Okay, yeah. You know, here we've had wars and rumors of war, we've had earthquakes, and we've had famine, and now we've got the moon not giving off its light and everything. But how do we know when the end comes? We know the end is here.